All right, it is 6:00 PM. And we are starting the Planning Commission meeting on October... What is today, 15th, 2024? Please join me and we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, would you like to call the roll?
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Present.
And Chairman Wiley.
Here. All right, good evening. And on behalf of the City of Independence, I welcome you to the Planning Commission meeting. Tonight, I would like anybody who would like to speak either for or against or about your project, if you plan on speaking, would you please raise your...rise and repeat after I promise to tell the truth to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Let me ask, is there any reason that we'd like to pull anything off the consent agenda tonight? If not, I'll take a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Go ahead and take the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes. Right, we do have case withdrawn. Do I need to record that case number? Okay, thank you. All right, I do have two cases to continue to have a motion.
Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we continue case 24-125-05 to the October 29th meeting.
All right, thank you. Any discussion?
My second.
Thank you for that second. All right, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes. Motion passes to continue the case to October 29th.
Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we continue case 24-100-17 to October 29th meeting.
My second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll take that vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes. The case is continued to October 29th. And we will continue to our first hearing regarding case 24, 421 Short Term Rental at 309 East Shore Avenue. All right, go ahead and have the staff report.
Absolutely. This is case number 24, 421, an application for a short-term rental at 309 East Shore Avenue. The applicant, Rob Scarborough, with Just Like Homes Vacation Rentals. It is outside of a 500-foot buffer from any other short-term rentals in accordance with the use regulations for short-term rentals as per city code. The aerial photograph shows this property adjacent to a newly constructed, single-family dwelling, both these constructed around the same time on Shore Avenue. The interior floor plan of the short-term rental shows a three bedrooms, kitchen, living room, and two bathrooms. Fire safety plan indicates all exits lead out the front door. Parking plan with a driveway accommodating two vehicles and enough frontage allowing for one car on the street to park. The notification area map indicates which property owners within the vicinity of the proposed short-term rental received notification of the public hearing in accordance with city code. The background of the property, the current legal description for this property is described by Jackson County as the west 40 feet of Lot 25 of the Nickel Place subdivision. Lot 25 of the Nickel Place subdivision was originally platted with 50 feet of lot frontage. Originally, the Nickel Place subdivision was platted and recorded with Jackson County in 1887. By that time, this property was located within Independence City limits. The property was annexed by the city in 1851. Independence City records indicate that an existing structure on this property was demolished in May of 2001. Jackson County property records indicated that this property fell into a state of abeyance and was acquired by the Land Trust of Jackson County in January of 2006. The property remained vacant until a new, single-family house was constructed in August of 2023. A certificate of occupancy was issued for this new, single-family home in May of 2024. The property has 40 feet of lot frontage, is 155 deep, feet deep. According to Jackson County property records, the property is a total of 6,481 square feet. The single-family structure is 950 square feet. It is a one-story house and features a front porch. The property is located within a neighborhood comprised predominantly of single-family homes. The surrounding single-family homes are of similar size, design, and appearance. It is located two blocks east of Noland Road and two blocks north of Woodlawn Cemetery. The property has a driveway that can accommodate up to two vehicles, and there is enough street frontage allowing for one additional vehicle to park on the street. There is enough parking available for three vehicles, which satisfies city code. The applicant proposes to utilize Minute Noise Monitoring to ensure guests are compliant with the city's noise ordinance, and Just Like Home Vacation Rentals will serve as a responsible agent for the short-term rental in accordance with city code. The applicant must address the following topics. The applicant will need to provide evidence of the installation of approved noise monitoring device. The applicant proposes to use Ted's Trash Service for weekly collection. The property will be listed on Airbnb. Just Like Home Vacation Rentals will oversee site security and general business operations, including screening customers and coordinating bookings. The form was completed by the applicant, covering licensing, future inspections, insurance, onsite information posting, and so forth. A fire evacuation plan had been submitted along with the floor plans of the house. The fire escape plan must also be posted per city requirement. The property must be inspected by the fire inspector and pass the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection. The applicant's existing driveway and parking plan satisfies the city's parking requirement for short-term rentals. Pictures of the house facing south, looking directly at the property. Facing east, down the street. Facing north, looking across the street. Facing west, looking up the street. Staff recommends approval of this short-term rental application. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license pursuant to Chapter 5 of the city code. The short-term rental operator shall remit transient guest tax to the city and comply with the operational standards outlined in Article 3, Chapter 5 of city code. The business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section 14-424 of the city code. The maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to six persons total. The maximum number of bedrooms shall be three. A noise monitoring system conforming to city code shall be installed and activated. The Good Neighbor Guidelines evacuation plan and other notices must be properly posted prior to approval of the business license. The property must be inspected by the fire inspector and pass the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection. And that concludes the staff's presentation.
All right, thank you, Gabe. Any questions from fellow planning commissioners to the staff? Hearing none. Would the applicant please come forward?
Good evening. My name is Rob Scarborough, 603 Quincy Boulevard. Is that better?
Thank you.
All right. Rob Scarborough, 603 Quincy Boulevard in Smithville, Missouri. And I am the short-term rental property manager for the proposed short-term rental at this address. This will...I actually have...I manage four other short-term rentals in Independence. I've seen most of you at least once or twice before. Before I came here this evening, I looked up on Airbnb of the four properties that we have licensed in Independence. We have over 900 reviews, which probably means we've hosted closer to 1,500 guests coming through Independence. Not everyone leaves a review. And we have had little to no issues with neighbors, no issues with the city whatsoever. And I'm born and raised in Independence, so I'm proud to get people into Independence and spend their money here.
I'm interested to know a little bit about the actual house since it was a vacant lot. So thank you for beautifying that neighborhood.
I wish I could take credit for that. Friends of mine were the ones that purchased it and built the two homes side by side. So I manage another one of their short-term rentals in Mission, Kansas.
Does that conclude? All right, thank you. Any commissioners, any questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this case? Anyone present who would like to speak for this case? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Go ahead and come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Sorry, they don't make podiums for short people. My name is Austin Gragg. I live at 327 East Shore Avenue. Thank you for the chance to speak today about the application to make the beautiful new construction home at 309 East Shore Avenue into a short-term rental. A small bit about me so you know where I'm coming from. My name is Austin Gragg. I'm a professional writer and editor. I'm a former Mid-Continent librarian and Liberty Public Schools employee. I'm a lifelong resident of Independence, Missouri. As Truman would proudly say, "This is where I belong." About three years ago, my wife and I moved out of our starter home to be near family and closer to the heart of our city, the square. We found 327 East Shore Avenue just down the street from 309, our dream home, a Victorian built in 1900 with hidden beauty we are blessed to restore. We have one little girl and another who is due literally any minute now, so if I do leave early, I apologize. I need to make bedtime a breeze. Commission, today I am here to assure you that the residents of Shore Avenue stand firmly against the commercialization of our quiet historic neighborhood. Independence needs affordable homes, starter homes like 309. We all know that. But this application's request is two steps removed from the sort of housing I think we'd all like to see thrive in our city. The applicant may claim they must do this or take a loss, given the construction and timeline that we've seen with the lot. Let's not get it twisted here, however, I am incredibly thankful for the willingness of investors to beautify the neighborhood, get new houses on the lot. My family is proud to own our home without a lien and are working regularly with neighbors to invest in making our community a great place to live and raise a family. It's bad enough that the number of rentals, businesses, who have eaten up housing as if it should be some rare commodity, an unobtanium, most millennials like me, and nearly all for all of Gen Z. I would ask the commission consider these applications in neighborhoods like mine adjacent to the square as fortifying a housing market which works for big businesses, not your citizens. The applicant may be applying with the story that they are trying to avoid a loss, but I would assure them that they are simply suffering a lack of patience. While another regular rental isn't my first choice to see in the neighborhood, the house right next door to 309, built by the same developer at the same time with the same blueprints, is up for rent. So clearly, there is a market for housing beyond short-term rentals. I would also like to raise concerns about how the business would operate. I was told when inquiring about this application that the applicant listed Airbnb as the facilitator for helping rent out the property. I understand completely homeowners having an Airbnb or two property to, you know, for additional income. Heck, I would aspire to that. But those are people who have a vested interest in our community because they live here. I would like to have seen a real management system on the application instead of the DoorDash of property management. The applicant has not care for our community as a business. They are positionally incapable of caring about Shore Avenue as much as its neighbors or you. The applicant may market this as a vacation getaway for people to visit Independence. Great for tourism, right? But the reality is, this is simply a high-turnover rental property with the same sort of out-of-town management as the problem houses Shore Avenue is unfortunately very familiar with. Nickel Place worked for two years with IPD, I sort of spearheaded that, to get a problem rental property out of a horrible loop of bad tenants and unneighborly behavior. Rentals have long been the bane of our otherwise quiet, lovely little street, which is a straight shot past Victorian mid-century and modern homes like you're walking through time as you're heading towards Benton, built in 1903. My neighbors in Nickel Place, some of them have lived there for 20, 30, or even 50 years. I cannot wait to say that myself. With most rentals, for a neighborhood like mine, it's a coin toss regarding the character, the quality of tenants each time they change. This property will be flipping that coin every 30 days. Eventually, statistically, it would support drug or sex trafficking, as many Airbnbs unwittingly do when their operators are out-of-towners or focused on cash and not community. Our streets aren't a business. They aren't a business opportunity. They are Independence. However, those with the cash get to play as they like. That's simply the world. Thankfully, we know our city has listened to its citizens in the past about these applications in comparable areas adjacent to the square. So please decline this application as well. We encourage the applicant to give a more honest attempt to sell the property before creating yet another rental. I beg the commission to side with its residents and not an out-of-town business. I thank you very much for your time and consideration. And I would like to mention briefly, there are four houses of elderly neighbors that I spoke with who I reviewed what my comments would be, and they were really excited for me to come out and speak, but they're simply not able to come. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come back up and respond to anything?
Thank you for allowing me to respond. I can certainly understand the feelings and sentiments. However, I don't believe that they are...that they speak for the entire community. I was at 309 Shore for the hour, hour and a half before this meeting. I spoke with one neighbor, and when they said everyone in the neighborhood is against this, that was not the conversation that I had. The neighbor directly to the east of us, I asked if they were coming to the planning and zoning meeting. They said they probably weren't. Talked about the management, what would be happening, and the only thing that they said was the current owners, the people who built the home, have not done a good job of mowing the lawn. And I explained that, you know, once we...if we receive the license, that we will add it to our list of lawns that we maintain around town, and they offered to mow it for us in exchange for payment. So to say that everyone in the neighborhood is against it is inaccurate. And I will also say that short-term rentals are not just a vacation destination. We're currently hosting two families in other parts of Kansas City that have had insurance claims on their homes, water damage, fire damage. And initially, the insurance companies put them up in a hotel. In one case, that's a husband-wife, two young, rambunctious boys in a hotel room. That did not work well for them. They have been in our home since Labor Day of last year while their home is being rebuilt. The school that their children go to are in the backyard, our property line touches the backyard. So it's not just vacationers, it is members of our community staying in their community in times of disaster. We also have a lot of workers coming to town that stay with us while they're working on projects. It's not drug traffickers and sex traffickers. That has not been my experience in 2,500-plus reservations. But I understand the fear and of the unknown, and so I would just ask this commission work with the facts, with my history in Independence, and ask that you please pass this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Nesbit? Yes.
Can I ask questions of the applicant? Now, the people who bought the property, did they build it to sell the house, or did they build it to make rentals?
I don't know for sure. I know they originally, when they reached out to me, one was going to be a traditional rental, the other one was going to be a short-term rental.
Well, because short-term rentals got to have the 500-foot buffer in Independence. That's why they had to do that. But I just wanted to...because I mean, as the other person said, we are needing more affordable houses in Independence. I mean, that's why I couldn't figure out if he just...I mean, you don't know, so that's really kind of hard for us to ask a question that way. I'd like to know for sure if he planned on just making rentals, or was he buying them to build houses to sell? That's what I'd like to know.
I don't know that he had plans to sell them. I know that he told me today that the one next door, the rental, they're supposed to accept a security deposit for a rental next week.
Right.
But that's what I know.
Now, one question I have also is that you brought up that you're housing people that are displaced from their houses for...and I don't think that's legally a short-term rental if you're renting it for more than 30 days, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? So those have to be long-time rentals. So I mean, you might be doing something if it's in Independence. So I'm just saying, that's something you need to consider, that's turned back into a long-time rental.
Correct.
So I should let you know that.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, thank you very much. Staff, I do have two questions for you. One would be, was there any kind of formal opposition to this?
No, there is no formal opposition in the form of a protest petition for the short-term rental.
All right, thank you. Second would be, based on the information he did just share and based on Commissioner Nesbit raising it, knowing that there's another short-term rental that has a long-term rental in it, does that provide any concern for approving a continue...another short-term rental with this particular applicant?
I may have to defer to Rick on this, or Brian, if you have some input.
Could you repeat what you said?
Yeah, just with Commissioner Nesbit also raising that concern, does knowing now out of the applicant's own mouth that there is a long-term rental and what has been approved for a short-term rental, does that in any way change the recommendation that we should approve this short-term rental for this applicant? From a code perspective or a violation of anything?
I mean, the long...I mean, there's...is another short-term rental within 500 feet, it's perfectly okay for there to be a long-term next door. I don't...I don't understand what the issue would be.
Not about this one, but by telling us that one of his other short-term rentals is now a long-term rental, is he in violation? And would you still recommend?
Well, I don't know if the one he's talking about is in the city limits of Independence or not. If it's not in Independence, it's not an issue.
One is in Kansas City, Missouri, and it has both a short-term and the traditional rental. The other one is in Overland Park, and they carry one rental license only. They don't differentiate between short-term and traditional.
All right, I just want to clarify, you were in good standing. Thank you. Any other questions for the commission, for staff?
I had one. You're located here in Kansas City, is that correct?
Smithville.
Okay. Not in Independence, but you are within 30 minutes.
Correct.
Or so. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close this hearing. Hearing is closed. Any further discussion, commissioners? All right, I will call for a vote.
No, Chair. Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve case 24-400-21, Short Term Rental, 309 East Shore Avenue.
My second.
I think Dan probably beat her by a smidge on that second. All right, it's been first and seconded. Now I will call for a vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres? Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman Wiley?
Yes. And the vote passes six to one...five to one. That is on case number 24, 400-21. Thank you, Gabe. And was that officially your second case from start to finish?
I can't remember how many cases I had last meeting, but yeah, I think so.
Congratulations. All right, we are gonna move on to case number 24400, whoops, well, I have the same case number on both of them. Oh, no idea. That is for a short-term rental at 915 South Brookside Avenue. Staff, could I have their report?
Absolutely. That's a relief that the case numbers weren't duplicated there. So the applicant, Jamie Woolery, seeks approval for a short-term rental at the house next door to her property, located at 915 South Brookside Avenue. The proximity map shows that this is outside of 500-foot buffer, in accordance with the use regulations for short-term rentals. Front view of the house shows the property that sits up on a hill facing west across Brookside Avenue. Floor plan of the interior of the house shows an enclosed front porch, a living room and dining room, two bedrooms, one bath, kitchen, and a back porch. The fire safety plan indicates emergency exits out the front door and the back door. The parking plan shows an extended driveway leading up to the front of the house on the side, and can easily accommodate two vehicles for the parking requirements. Staff would like to note that the asphalt pad by the street, the frontage, would not be approved for parking. The notification area map shows the property owners within the vicinity of the proposed short-term rental, which received notice of the public hearing tonight. And a bit of background on the property. The current legal description for this property is described by Jackson County as the south half of Lot 25 of the Evanston Park subdivision. Lot 25 of the Evanston Park subdivision was originally platted with 100 feet of lot frontage. The Evanston Park subdivision was platted and recorded with Jackson County in 1885. At that time, the property was not located within independent city limits. The property would not be annexed into the city until 1961. The property has 50 feet of lot frontage and is approximately 300 feet deep. According to Jackson County property records, the property is a total of 14,400 square feet. The property is on a hill. From the curb access to the structure, there is a 20-foot rise in elevation. The rear yard flattens out towards the rear property line. The single-family structure is 828 square feet. Real estate records indicate the property was constructed in 1917. It is one-story and features a front deck. The property is located within a neighborhood comprised predominantly of single-family homes. The surrounding single-family homes are of similar size, design, and appearance. Mount Washington Cemetery is located west across Brookside Avenue. The property has a driveway that can easily accommodate two vehicles. The existing driveway satisfies the parking requirements outlined in City Code. The property owner intends to utilize a noise monitoring system to ensure guests are compliant with the city's noise ordinance. The applicant will need to provide evidence of the installation of an approved noise monitoring device. The applicant proposes to utilize Ted's Trash Service for Weekly Collection. The property owner lives next door and intends to handle trash removal for the short-term rental. The property will be listed on Airbnb. The property owner will oversee site security and general business operations, including screening customers and coordinating bookings. The form was completed by the applicant, covering licensing, future inspections, insurance, onsite information posting, and so forth. A fire evacuation plan had been submitted along with the floor plans of the house. The fire escape plan must also be posted per code requirement. The property must be inspected by the fire inspector and pass the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection. The applicant's existing driveway satisfies City Code for parking. Pictures of the property, facing east, looking up in directly to the property, facing southeast, looking at the property next door, facing south, looking down the street, west, looking across the street to Mount Washington Cemetery, northwest, looking across the street, north, looking up the street. And staff recommends approval of this short-term rental application. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license pursuant to Chapter 5 of the City Code. The short-term rental operator shall remit transient guest tax to the city and comply with the operational standards outlined in Article 3, Chapter 5 of City Code. The business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section 14-424 of the City Code. The maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to four persons total. The maximum number of bedrooms shall be two. A noise monitoring system conformant to City Code shall be installed and activated. The Good Neighbor Guidelines evacuation plan and other notices must be properly posted prior to approval of the business license. The property must be inspected by the fire inspector and pass the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection. And that concludes the presentation for this application.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant please step forward?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I make some comments to staff?
Yes, excuse me. Yes, sir.
Hey, Gabe, can you go back to the picture on the front of the house?
Yes.
Okay, so, to the left, I mean, I guess, since you didn't take a picture to the left, is it all grown up on the side of the street? I mean, what you're showing there, it looks like it is.
That is a great point. Yeah, there's, looks to be some golden rod growing in there, along with some other thicket, shrubbery. Yeah, it is grown up, you're right.
Okay. I was trying to figure that, I mean, because the pictures on Google are not very good, so that's what I was trying to figure out, so.
Sorry, what'd you say?
The pictures on Google didn't look that good, that's why I was looking at, to verify what you had there, so, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Excuse me for that pause. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Jamie Woolery. I live next door at 919 South Brookside Avenue.
And you also own this property?
I'm sorry?
And you own this property?
Yes, I own both properties. We initially bought the 915 address, and we've, we've been at our property for 12 years, and we bought it in, I wouldn't say 2021, and with the intent of my mother-in-law to come and stay with us, and she's in hospice care, she lives in Sedalia, so now we're trying to...
What would you like us to know about this?
We've poured our heart and soul in it, we just replaced the furnace and AC and the water heater, and have done some plumbing, lots of work, and we just think it's a beautiful place, we would love to share it and continue. We've dabbled in longer-term rentals, Gabe has been tremendous helping me decipher which is which, and we've decided short-term is the way to go. We'd like to be in it, maintain it, making sure that maintenance is done and is cared for.
Would you like to respond to, I noticed a cease and desist operations letter in your packet? Tell us a little bit about that.
Oh.
I can help out if that'd be helpful?
Yes, please.
Yes, so that was a notice of violation that the city had sent Jamie Woolery for the operations of a short-term rental, and subsequently, Jamie submitted a landlord license application and immediately was working towards the submission of a short-term rental application.
Yeah, I have the landlord licensing, but that's what, Gabe's helped me understand that you, it's either, either or, you can't do both. So we have dabbled with the longer term. I made the mistake of running to a friend's daughter, and it didn't go well. So the short-term, we like to be in there, making sure that nothing's broken, things are maintained and orderly, and we oversee the lawn and everything. The front hillside does have some invasive, we've been working on getting that out, and it's much better. It continues to come back, and we just keep battling it, so hopefully we can have it beautiful one day.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant, for commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
So basically, you looked puzzled about the cease and desist, so did you not get the letter?
My husband did, but it was amongst all of this, so I guess that's, I'm understanding that's what it was, was the...
So you were already advertising on Airbnb or something, say what the deal was? That's how they caught you?
No, because we went to the city, and I applied for the landlord licensing, and I guess that brought it to Gabe's attention, or I don't know who brought it, but it was at that point that it was...
I mean, because this is only a week ago, it's on 10/7, so that's what I'm saying, your applicant was on September, so that's, I mean, that's quite a ways, that's almost a month ahead of time, month after, not unless, we got dates wrong here or something.
I was thinking it was more like a month ago we got it, but yeah, we, we do have some bookings, I was told that we could continue keeping the bookings, but not to book anymore until we get through this process.
Okay, so you, okay, so that's the deal. My only worry is, I mean, we're inviting people to come and stay in our city, but when they pull up there and they see what I'm seeing on the picture here, it doesn't look good. The mailbox doesn't look good, the growth looks bad. I mean, I think if you're gonna advertise something that we're trying to make the city look nice, that should have been cleaned up. I mean, that's just my opinion, but I mean, that's something that would think that, are they gonna keep it up? That's, that's one thing that I look at, that I mean, doesn't look nice for the city. I mean, if you wanna comment anymore, you said you're trying to, but to my opinion, it doesn't look like we're trying that hard out there to take care of that.
That's understood. I definitely think it needs a little more curb appeal. We've painted the deck, and our focus has been on it in the house, and this spring, actually the last couple of weeks, we've been working on trimming up the shrubs and the golden rod.
Well, this picture is probably two days ago, Gabe, or last week?
Yeah, I would say that this was a couple weeks ago.
Okay, a couple weeks ago, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I visited the property a couple of days ago, and I might point out that the elevation from the driveway to the main part of the yard is probably three foot high, so that the appearance of the weeds or whatever it is, they're, they're not actually that, it's not all weeds, is what I'm trying to say. So you go from the driveway up to the yard, it's about three foot, so the weeds are not really that, that tall. They are taller at the, at the, actually at the street level, but next to the driveway, it's about three foot elevation.
Oh, so you're saying there's an elevation there, it's not? Okay.
Yeah, it appears that the weeds are three or four foot tall, and they're not that tall.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question about the elevation of just the driveway itself. We are in Missouri, and we have, I went, and my mic just went out. What is your plan to ensure that that driveway is safe?
We, I can't think of it, it starts with an M. There's a local company, we actually come, have them come out and do our driveway too, if we're not able to on the day of, and they're very quick and responsive, but we do offer one driveway service, clearing service, so.
Okay. Any other questions for any commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
You might consider putting some kind of signage on that driveway, because I pulled into the driveway and pulled all the way to the top, and it was very, I had to really focus when I was backing out of the driveway, so that I stayed on the paved part, and when you get actually down to the street and you're backing out, that could be a dangerous place because you can't really see traffic coming from the north. You can see fairly good to the south, but the traffic coming from the north toward that, so you might put a sign there telling them to use caution when backing out or something.
Okay. Any other questions?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Now, are you okay with all the recommendations that you have to do, the monitoring system and all that? You're good putting all that in?
Yes, I just ordered the minute today, actually.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone present that'd like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will close the hearing.
I'd like to ask Dan a question, if I may. Why did you have to back out of that driveway?
Because it would be really, the elevation from the front to the back of the driveway is fairly steep, and, and it's very narrow, so if you backed up into it off of the street, it would be really difficult to do. So I pulled in forward, and then when I was backing up, it was, like I said, the...
But there's no place to turn around after you go up that driveway?
No, there is not.
There is not? Huh.
All right, I'm gonna close the hearing. Any other comments among commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve case 24-400-22, short-term rental, 915 South Brookside Avenue.
Second.
Thank you, I have a first and a second. Will you call the vote?
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
I'm gonna comment that it needs a little bit more work to make it safer. I will say now, on this one.
Commissioner Young?
No.
And Chair Wiley?
Yes. The vote is three to three. And a tie vote means?
It fails. Right? Yeah, fails.
And the vote fails. Case number 2440022. All right, that is all we have on the hearings tonight, and we will move to a roundtable. Anything from the staff? All right, Commissioner Young, anything?
Nope.
Commissioner Torres?
No.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
And Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
All right. Then that is it, we are adjourned at 6:48. Thank you.